Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly, this is a special meeting date for July 9, 2020, 6:30 PM. And as you'll notice, because if you're attending this meeting, you're not sitting in City Hall, you're on your computer or your phone. This meeting is conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meeting Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. So we're meeting pursuant to that. So with that, let's, let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
And I, America, the republic which stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. That was a call to order and the pledge. Are there any sunshine announcements?
Yes, give me one moment. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Journal, the 36th reporter, and posted with the clerk. And as the chairman stated, the meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. And I have the notices up to be marked for the record.
Okay, that will be B1 in evidence.
Thank you. Okay. Can you take roll call whenever you're ready, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Valardo?
Here.
Commissioner Nutcher?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner McCormick?
Here.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Here.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
We have seven present.
Thank you. Can we swear in staff, please?
If you raise your right hand, we have Cameron Black, Lindsay Sigmund, and Tanya Marion. Do you swear or confirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence?
Nope, just one case on for this special meeting, 790 Ocean.
Okay. And, yes.
We do have some correspondence that we want to discuss in executive session, though.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So we do have an executive session later on.
Okay, yeah, so we'll hold all discussion of correspondence until after we go through, and there's no old business, right? So just, just new business, and then after that, we'll go to correspondence. So the new business is case Z20-012 and case Z20-013, preliminary and major subdivision plan with C variances. The address is 782-790 Ocean Avenue. The applicant is 790 Ocean LLC. The attorney, Mr. O'Connell. I assume, Lindsay, you're pulling together the team.
I just promoted Mr. O'Connell, but if the remaining members of the team could quick raise your hand, so I can promote you as well. I'm just gonna wait for, because there's four people. Cameron, can you see people who are raising their hand? Can you confirm that those are the professionals? Because there's four. You're on mute, Cameron.
Okay. Billy is the owner, okay?
Got that.
If he's promoted, then he can tell you the, the rest of the people, because I actually don't recognize some of their names. I would be looking for a guy named Chess Chat, but I don't see him. Hey, Billy. Is Joaquin Matthew and, okay, they're both part of your team?
Yes, and Gene.
Okay, and then Sofina?
Yeah, Sue. Sue, yeah.
Okay, that. Okay, promote that, okay.
Got it. Also, Gene, you are on mute. I think you were trying to say something, but you are muted. You have, all tenants have the ability to mute and unmute, and you are able to share your screens as well.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Also, Chris Westcott, please, if you could promote him.
Sorry, Chris.
Josh, before we get started, while we're waiting for everyone to check in, why don't we just put Ms. Gene O'Connell's notices, mark those for the record. So Bridget, we have his, Gene's notice to the property owners, a copy of the newspaper publication, and affidavit, and proof of service. So why don't we mark that, Bridget, as A1?
And this will be A1 for both of them?
Yes.
Okay. A1 in evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
And one other thing, Gene, no, since we're doing this remotely, you agreed to have your witnesses sworn in remotely.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you. So. We can proceed?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a number of witnesses tonight, and they have a number of plans to present to the board. But I'd like to start tonight with the owner and applicant, William Santamuro, to give the board a flavor of how we got to this meeting tonight over a couple of years of work. So if we could swear William Santamuro, and he can give a presentation on this property.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Santamuro, just for the, for the board's sake, would you tell them how you got involved in this property, when you purchased it, what kind of shape the property was in, and, and how we got to this meeting tonight?
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. My name is Billy Santamaro. I was born and raised in Jersey City. I attended the Bergen School, I attended St. Peter's Prep, and I attended NYU. I reside in the same house that I grew up in on Duncan Court. My family was comprised of five, myself, my mom, who's a Jersey City schoolteacher, my uncle, and my grandparents. Now I'm the owner of a third generation business in Jersey City, living in Jersey City since 1948. My wife and I got married in St. Aloysius. My children, Sophia, 10 years old, was in a movie like us that premiered at Lowe's. She plays gymnastics, involved in theater. My son, William, is 14, he plays soccer, involved with student government. He's a writer, and he will be attending St. Peter's Prep next year. 790 Ocean Avenue was a project that I had purchased. It was a vacant building. Abandoned that best. 782-784 was in the same state. As a child, I had many experiences in that area. I have friends that have lived and still live there. As a matter of fact, my grandmother used to take me to bingo, and I would have pizza and delivered tab to people playing bingo in the church. Over, the, the site is over half of an acre. Currently has a vacant home on it, and it has an existing 16-unit building. Currently, the site has a very large backyard that has been subject to illegal dumping and an excessive amount of weed maintenance, and an awful lot of illegal activities. My proposal is to demolish the existing structure, and the replacement will be a four-story mixed-use, 38-unit multifamily, including an indoor sports facility with parking. This new four-story boasts 13 studio apartments, approximately 475 to 575 square feet, 17 one-bedroom apartments, approximately 550 to 566 square feet, eight two-bedroom apartments, approximately 834 to 862 square feet. And these units will provide wonderful living accommodations with modern layouts, stainless steel appliances, central air conditioning, all with hotel finishes. It has 28 off-street parking spots with a two-way drive aisle. It boasts an indoor-sized sports facility to accommodate 20 children to play. The building will offer a uniquely designed soundproofing system to tenants during these times of plague, in-ground stormwater detention, solar and energy-saving components, and modern-day life-safety items not only offered to the new building's occupants, but to the existing six-unit parcel as well. The aspects of this project come from real life. I'm a local father of two children. We participate in Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, school events, sports events, CCD, and birthday parties. This schedule sends me traveling all over the state, country, and even outside the country. Children in Jersey City desperately need a place to play. This location will provide a local 12-month play area for everyone to enjoy. We invite Jersey City Recreation and others to utilize this space and provide a unique recreation space that Jersey City does not have yet. We also, also will provide special needs housing. We are looking to provide nine units of, of the project will be designated for people with special needs. I have collaborated with the United Way to provide health and human services for the occupants that will reside in the building. The unit rents are all affordable. Studios will be $1,292 a month, one bedrooms $1,439, and two bedrooms $1,691. These numbers, these numbers were taken from the HUD Fair Market Rent Guidelines. The unit mix was made to accommodate affordability to all of the units. The 29 remaining units provide an affordable alternative to the, to the same higher rents you see and read about in Jersey City. I am a local builder in Jersey City, and I intend to build this building myself. I will most likely sit in a trailer on a daily basis until this project is complete. My staff are mostly local residents and lifelong friends. When completed, I will have an active role remaining with this building as I live in Jersey City and I intend to stay. The building, the building size and design, I have met with many members of the Jersey City community already. We have lowered the building height, we've reduced the density, we've increased the parking, and we've increased the setbacks. We have reduced windows through possible sound concerns. But most apparent is we intend to create a rowhouse facade on the Oak Street park-facing side. This rowhouse feel will begin on Ocean Avenue and have a beautiful interpretation of park-facing rowhouses from viewing inside the park. Lastly, we even met with Chris Perez, and he's offered us the suggestion to use the name The Sherwood, as he boasted the Harriest history to me. To conclude, Jersey City's needs more projects that answer to the requests of the people that live here. I live here, and I am a builder. Athletics provide life lessons that are relatable to everyone, and children need a place to play. This project gives you that. Affordability, my units demonstrate that buildings can be built with HUD Fair Market rents. This building demonstrates that. And special needs housing is a way to look out for your neighbor. I show you that. I have demonstrated that this project meets and exceeds the positive criteria and promotes the general welfare from the construction phase all the way to the occupancy phase. And I would like you to all know, this project does not requesting a, any tax relief or any public funding. I hope that you enjoy the rest of this evening's professionals.
Billy, thanks so much. I do have one or two questions to ask you, because the planning staff reviewing the project had a couple of issues, and rather have to call you back later, since you're already on the microphone, I thought I'd just ask you to address those couple of issues, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, so initially, I, I know you testified that you met with Chris Perez, you met with the community, and you also met with the pastor of Christ the King Church, which is right next door, correct?
Correct.
And approximately, how many times did you meet with Chris Perez in, in trying to get this project off the ground?
Approximately 10.
And as you testified earlier, there are many changes that you made to the project based on your conversations with Mr. Perez, is that correct?
That is correct.
And one of the issues that the planning staff asked was, what type of affordable housing is this? And I know from your application that this is low-income housing, which is less than for residents making less than 50% of median income, correct?
This project is, has a rent, a rent baseline that is according to the fair market value rents that are indicated by HUD, Gene. That is what this building is. We are not looking to, we are looking to afford anyone the opportunity to pay these rents.
Okay. And one of the issues on the subdivision is, right now, you would have two buildings on one lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's the main reason for the subdivision, so to, to get rid of that very serious problem. Now, you, 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 you went over a little bit about the indoor athletic field.
Yes.
I think the, the board is gonna need a little bit more information. For example, this is undersized for any regulation games, is that correct?
Correct. This is a, this is a indoor, it's an indoor playground that is basically, it's, it's a, it's basically a turf indoor space that affords an opportunity for practices, as well as small scrimmage, practicing up to five, five versus five people, which affords a total number of 10 players per field. And there's two fields which, which can accommodate that baseball practices, football practices, soccer games, it could accommodate anything that's played on a field.
Right, but you can't have an official football game or soccer game, because the field's not big enough, correct?
That's correct. We cannot have an official football game or anything like that.
Thank you. Now, you, you testified earlier about the, working with the Department of Recreation and a number of local children's organizations. Have you had conversations with some of these organizations, and who are they?
Yes, I've spoken with, my son plays soccer, and he's played Jersey City Rec Soccer, and he works with Coach Alex, as well as Global Soccer Academy. I've spoken, they very well may be on the program tonight. And organizations like that, which are involved with Jersey City kids. And it doesn't have, the, the space does not have to, it, it's available, it's available to anyone to use. It's, it's, there, there's no reason for living in a six-month weather window, why we can't provide 12 months of playtime to children. And this is my opportunity to prove that I can build a space that affords indoor play space for people.
All right, now, I want to, I want to switch off to one more issue that was raised by the planning staff. You own the existing building at 782 Ocean Avenue. That's, there's 16 units that have fire escapes in the rear of the building, is that correct?
That is correct.
And presently, that's your second means of egress, and the egress from those fire escapes are through your property at 790 Ocean, correct?
That is correct. That is the way that it exists now.
And that is how it will continue. They're gonna have a permanent easement that will be recorded, that will give them access from those fire escapes through our property at 790 Ocean, correct?
That is correct.
And you're also contemplating, and maybe in the future, that you may sprinkle that building for more safety purposes?
That is correct, the existing building, yes.
And just because they asked, I won't have to ask you later, are there any code violations on that building?
There is not.
Okay, no further questions. And that's my presentation for my owner and applicant.
Okay. I, I thought you were about to say your overall presentation.
That would've been great, I know, Josh, sorry.
So Billy, thank you very much for, for that detail. I think that was really helpful guidance. So Eugene, if you want to proceed with the rest of your, you know, with your experts, we're happy to hear the rest of the application.
Thank you, Chairman. So now I'm gonna call Matt Sekler to go over the subdivision map.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Matthew Sekler, that's S-E-C-K-L-E-R.
Thank you.
I'm Stonefield Engineering Design.
Okay, Matt, could you pull up the subdivision map, show the current conditions, and show how, how we're gonna subdivide this lot into two separate lots?
Certainly.
Gene, before we do that, could, could, could you or, or Mr. Sekler quickly just go through his, I mean, we'll accept your qualifications, because I, I'm sure your, your license is valid and, and current in the state of New Jersey. But I just want to, you know, give you the benefit of being qualified on the record.
Sure. Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College of Schenectady, New York, a master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University, licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been accepted before this board in both traffic engineering and planning, as well as general engineering. I'll be speaking onto some traffic engineering and some planning aspects of the application tonight.
Thank you, and we accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, Matt, so now, let's just go through the subdivision map for the.
Absolutely. And I'll share my screen now. Okay, before the board, I have two subdivision plans. I will read them into the record, and I guess you want me to designate these as an exhibit. This is, I think, previously been submitted to the board, but I will read them into the record. This is from Behar Surveying Associates. It is a subdivision plan. This one is titled, name of it, 782/784 Ocean Avenue, City of Jersey City, Hudson County, New Jersey. Just to highlight the board where we are, the top of the page here is Ocean Avenue. Oak is generally basically right at the top-left corner of the screen. On the, this is referring to the subdivision, or the shortening of what is currently Lot 44 in Block 21302. Lot 44 currently goes all the way to the rear. It currently extends about 200 feet in depth, back from the Ocean Avenue right-of-way. We are looking to subdivide it, and we're showing this darker red line, and create a smaller lot, one that will be approximately 85 feet in depth. It does include the entire structure and the fire escapes of the existing three-story building that is under common ownership, as you heard from the, from the applicant. So we are looking to subdivide this property off, basically shrink the Lot 44. Doing so, we are still compliant as it relates to the lot area. We are well above what the lot area requires. Lot area requires 2,500 square feet. We are greater than 5,000 square feet, so over double the air, minimum lot area. We do meet the lot with requirements. However, we are short of the lot depth by about 15 feet. And also the setback, the rear yard setback also becomes a new variance with the existing structure. We do not have the 20 feet from the rear of the property to this property, from the rear of the property to the proposed new property. And again, you've heard from the applicant, you'll hear from the architect, the engineer, myself, regarding what is being proposed on the leftover portion of the lot, which we'll see in the next sheet, is going to be combined with existing Lot 6. So this again is the subdivision, or the shrinking of Lot 44. The next sheet that I'll be referring to is, is the creation of new Lot 6.01. This is combining what used to be Lot 6, which was this kind of L-shaped property, that has a current two-and-a-half-story dwelling on it, that you heard from the applicant, is 790 Ocean Avenue. He bought it as, generally, originally, he bought it as a vacant property, as a current kind of area in the rear that is undeveloped. And we are looking at extending or adding to that lot, this leftover shape, what was left over behind existing Lot 44. That will create a larger lot, which you'll hear later regarding what the development will be, but it creates a 17,000-square-foot lot, one that meets all of the bulk criteria as it exists today. Obviously, there are some other variances as it relates to the site plan that we'll be discussing in a few minutes. But in terms of the subdivision, or the creation of this new lot, there are no variances related to the proposed Lot 4, Lot 6.01, which would be 790 Ocean Avenue. So again, that's the subdivision, or the kind of changing of the two lots here. Again, these are currently under common ownership. We are doing this subdivision to ensure that we have one structure on each lot, instead of, originally, we were having a, two structures would have fallen on existing Lot 44. So that was the reason for this development and this subdivision and lot kind of reconsolidation. So again, that's the subdivisions, and again, we'll hear extensive testimony, and I'll kind of come back later on as it relates to the site plan, the traffic engineering, and the planning proofs related to the proposed development.
All right, thanks. And Matt, as a part of your presentation, you also submitted a statement of principal points dated June 25th with the, on the proposed subdivision, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and I'd like to mark those into the record, too?
Certainly.
Okay, and are we actually marking anything, Benny?
Oh, wait.
I don't know what was submitted or not, so.
It was on the portal.
Well, just let me know if I have an A2 and an A3 or no.
I would think you'd have an A2 now.
And give a description for that.
That is, that is, that is the principal points, the principal planning points prepared by myself at Stonefield Engineering.
Okay, that will be A2.
And Gene, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like me to discuss about the actual subdivision? I know a lot of the application will be discussed as part of the site.
We'll get back to that when we, when we go into further testimony. So I think at this point, your testimony is completed.
Okay, great, thank you. Gene, do you want to continue with your next expert?
I, I think I will. I'd like to put my whole case in, and then we can talk about the subdivision and site plan. So my, my next witness is gonna be Joaquin Bozis from Inglazy Architects. And Joaquin should be on somewhere.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Um, Gene, I'm sorry, uh, Gene, I'm wondering if you wanna, um, swear in Soufian to, to discuss the, uh, site plan and-
Okay, he's gonna be our next witness after you do the architectural, so we can-
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Gene, am I swearing in Joaquin?
Yes, Joaquin, could you raise, can you hear us?
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full legal name for the-
Sure, Joaquin Bozis, J.O.A.Q.U.I.N., last name B.O.U.Z.A.S.
And the firm name spelled out?
Inglaze, I-N-G-L-E-S-C, Architecture and Engineering.
Great, thank you.
Now, Joaquin, you're a licensed, uh, architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am, yes.
And have you testified before the, uh, Board of, Zoning Board of Adjustment in Jury City before?
I have, yes.
And your license is current?
My license is current and in good standing.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Joaquin, can, can you go through the architectural plan, the elevations, the materials, the layout of each floor for the board?
Sure. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so I'll quickly go through the, uh, ground floor plan. Um, the engineer will go in, uh, more in-depth into how the parking works, um, but primarily the ground floor is, uh, parking. Off of Ocean Avenue, we have the entrance, um, here, it's a 22-foot wide entrance. One way in, one way out, uh, two-way, uh, we also have a pedestrian entrance off of, uh, Ocean, and the main residential lobby off of Ocean. The vehicles would come into the parking area, uh, we have seven spaces here for commercial parking, and, uh, 21 spaces for residential parking. Uh, we have bike storage, uh, utility room, and a trash room. The residential lobby gets you to a stair and elevator, which brings you to the upper floor, where you have four units, um, three one-bedrooms and a studio. And on this floor, we have the footsall field, um, indoor soccer, uh, where Billy explained it's five-on-five play. It's regulation footsall, um, size, um, obviously not regulation soccer size, but you have one field, um, field number one here, and then field, uh, number two here. Uh, this space is 16 feet tall, um, and so there's plenty of height. And we have, in the rear here, some restrooms and open storage lockers. As you go up to the upper floor, we have 17 units on this gra, on this upper floor, uh, that's typical for the next two, uh, floors, where the studios and the two bedrooms range from 442 square feet to 834. I can quickly go through a studio where we have, um, bathroom, closet, open kitchen, and a large, uh, grate room, uh, 15-foot by 24-six. As the building is, um, has an elevator, uh, every unit is ADA adac, uh, adaptable. A one-bedroom would be typically of this size, um, five, about approximately 575 square feet. Uh, bedroom, 11-foot 4 by 10, 10-11, um, kitchen, living, dining area, and closet. We have a laundry room on each floor as well. And then a hallway that leads you to the other, um, units. I'll show you a two-bedroom, um, this is a typical two-bedroom, 834 square feet. 11-foot by 10-foot, um, bedroom, open living space, uh, U-shaped kitchen, and large bathroom. Uh, all the units would have PTACs, uh, for, for cooling and heating. Two means of egress, we have trash rooms on each floor. And the upper floor would be the same. Here, I can explain the setbacks that we're proposing. On the, on the ground floor, essentially the building goes up to the property lines. This would be the, the outline, um, I think I can, it all goes up to the property line here. And then on the upper floors, they set back, uh, five feet one. And that setback happens again all the way around, and provides, um, the windows to all the units. It also allows, uh, the setback that the neighbors requested, uh, during, uh, Billy's, um, meetings with them, that they wanted the units as far back as possible on the, uh, upper floors. On the third floor, um, they requested that, uh, we extend the setback even further, and we set back, that residential wall, an additional 11 feet, um, for a total of approximately 16, uh, six, um, from the part, from the property line of the adjacent neighbor. And again, uh, the setback happens all around, um, the building. For the elevation, we have townhouse, um, structures next door. Uh, we designed it in a way where the architecture would mimic, uh, the adjacent structures. We have a architectural cornice here, uh, that continues the dialogue of the, uh, adjacent neighbors. Uh, another smaller cornice here on the, on the third floor, breaking up, uh, the height for that three-story field. Um, we have the entrance for the, for the cars in and out, uh, the main entrance for the building would be, uh, in more modern language, uh, in these metal panels, uh, with the PTAC grills. And then that top floor is, um, set back, um, approximately three feet from the facade. You would never see this from the street, but in the back here, you see, uh, the elevation that would be much further behind. Uh, this elevation is the south elevation that Billy had mentioned, that's adjacent to the park. And he wa, he wanted to continue that rowhouse feel, uh, around the block. Um, we haven't designed the 16-unit building, but, uh, this building, uh, which would eventually continue that language, is designed as, um, individual townhouses, um, and breaking up, breaking up the materials and, and setbacks, uh, along that facade. Um, you can see the, the ground floor here would be the parking, uh, which is, uh, enclosed and not visible from the, from the park. And then the windows, again, this facade would be set back five feet from that ground floor. Um, this is the rear, uh, of, of the building with, uh, approximately, uh, 13-foot, um, block wall on the ground floor, and then the four stories of residential, um, above it. And then this is the facade that faces the, uh, neighbors. Again, this block is on the property line, this elevation is at five feet one, and then this elevation is at 17, uh, 16-six back from, from the property line. Um, this elevation back here is way behind, um, and wouldn't really, wouldn't be seen from, from the, from the neighbor's yard. We have, I can just go over the material board at this point, then. The elevation along Ocean Avenue, again, uh, creates, uh, that rowhouse, uh, continuation of, of the adjacent, um, neighbors' buildings. Um, the entrance, that cornice, uh, the two-tone, uh, metal, uh, with the entrance into the building and the, um, the top floor setback. And then that facade that I was describing along the park, uh, facing south, uh, where it's broken, uh, up into, um, the townhouse, feel, um, in, in, in width, um, broke it up a little bit with some metal, uh, panels here on the top floor, and, uh, continued that cornice that would wrap around, essentially around the, the block. This, the, the iron spot, uh, red brick, the architectural cornice, um, the, the smaller-scale cornice, and the panels, uh, metal panels that we would be proposing. I believe that is it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joaquin, I did have, uh, one or two questions, the first, um, your firm has done a multitude of affordable housing, uh, units in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Thousands.
That's, congratulations. And, um, ju, the size of these units, how do they compare with the units that you generally do for affordable housing?
Typically HMFA standards, um, they're, they're affordable, uh, sizes, um, in, in terms of, uh, a one-bedroom, approximately si, this is 566, but this is the net area. Uh, if you take the area of the outside wall and all that, it, it comes out to about 600 square feet. But these fall in line with the affordable, um, affordable housing, uh, guidelines.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions, so, uh, that completes my testimony for my architect.
Okay.
So if, uh, if there are any questions for Joaquin, I can go to Soufian Elmusi, my engineer.
Okay.
So Soufian, you have to be sworn in.
Okay, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state and spell your full legal name for the record?
Soufian Elmusi, and it's spelled S as in Sam, O-U, F as in Frank, I-A-N-E. Last name is E-L, space, M-O-U, double S, I.
Thank you.
Soufian, could you give, uh, your, uh, credentials to the board?
I am, uh, a licensed engineer in the state of, uh, New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut, and I have a Bachelor's in Civil Engineering from the Portland State University in Oregon. My license is in good standing.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, so you've, you've heard, uh, Joaquin's testimony on the architectural, could you go through the engineering, the landscaping, the lighting?
Sure.
Sewer, et cetera?
I shall show, share my screen. All right, so Joaquin, walk this real quick through the, through the site itself, but the idea here is after the subdivision is to demolish the existing two-story house and put in the new, uh, the, the proposed new building. And, um, the grade, the, the grade difference, the existing grade difference within the site varies about three, three feet, so the site is relatively flat, with the high point being the entrance of the, just of the building along Ocean Ave. And actually, I will also discuss, the current easements, as, as mentioned earlier, will be vacated, that granted, uh, access to the 7, 782 and 784 buildings, and as discussed by the architects, that will provide passage to and/or sprinkler, sprinkler of the system for the 782 building in order to have only one means of egress. I'm gonna go through the parking as well real quick, but Joaquin, to discuss to, the, uh, the front facade to this building along Ocean Ave is only 41 feet, but within those 41 feet, we're able to maintain the residential lobby entrance, as well as maintain the full width, uh, drive aisle for a two-way traffic. As you get into the, into the rear of the building, the seven commercial parking spots are within the front of the, front of the, the drive aisle, and then they are separated from the residential portion of this building, uh, parking of this building by a, by a gate, and a, uh, a gated door as well. So the idea here is to create parking for both the commercial aspect, as well as the residential, but clearly delineates access for the commercial, the commercial tenants, as well as for the, uh, for the residents, and the idea here is to maintain safety and privacy of the residents. We are also providing 10, uh, 10 bike storages up here for, for the commercial tenants, and 30 parking spots for, 30 bike spots for, uh, for the residents, and again, that's to encourage bike usage. All right, and then moving on to the utilities. All the utilities, uh, are run through the building and come out along Ocean Ave. We've managed to include the storm management system, sanitary line, water line, gas line, and telephone and cable. The idea here is we are providing a under, underwa, underground, uh, stormwater management system, which is, which are these three pipes that you see north on, on plan, they will be pulling in all the roof drains, which you can see coming down the columns, as well as the, the side of the building, connecting to the storm system, which controls the outflow during just storm peak events. And we are connecting that into the existing sewer line that's currently in the sidewalk. Typically, we don't do connections in the sidewalk, however, per our communications with JCMUA, we agreed that since that, the, the sewer is on the sidewalk, we were given permission to connect in the sidewalk. And that is basically it for the utilities, and I shall move to lighting and landscaping. As the ground floor is enclosed, the, or we do not, do not anticipate any, uh, light spillage from this property to any other property around, uh, surrounding our lots, and we have provided enough lighting as, uh, as you can tell by the, uh, for candle calculations to meet the New Jersey, and Jersey City standards for parking lighting. We've also included a couple exterior lights along the front facade to maintain, uh, clear lighting for cars coming in and out of the building. And in terms of landscaping, we do not have any landscape, uh, within the building, but we do provide some, some landscaping at the, at the front of the, the property.
Street tree as well.
And a street tree, thank you. And that is a quick, uh, rundown of my testimony, unless anybody has any questions.
Um, I have one, one question I wanted to ask, uh, Joaquin, but I think you can answer it. Uh, we, we took great pains into, uh, for soundproofing in this building, and I wonder if you could just go through briefly, uh, the soundproofing that we have provided for this property.
Right, so, um, by, by code, we have to provide, uh, a minimum STC, a sound transmission coefficient, and an IIC, uh, impact isolation class by, uh, 50, um, that's standard, uh, but we're going to be installing some acoustical panels, um, to also absorb the sound from, uh, the footsall field and provide additional, uh, acoustical, um, sound from the footsaw field and provide additional acoustical protection for the residents of the building.
Excuse me, you've been using a word footsol, are you saying football?
No, it's F U T S O L, footsol.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have no further questions for either Joaquin or my other witness. So if there's no questions I can bring on, I could bring Matt Sackler to to go over the principal points for the site plan.
Thanks, I'll briefly talk about the traffic because I think that helps discuss the negative criteria that I'll talk about when going through the D one variance justification before the board. I'm going to pull up this site plan as well that everyone has seen before, just to have something to reference in case something comes up.
Please keep your voice up.
Sorry about that. Um, so again, you've heard a testimony regarding the design of the building and the number of units, and I think one of the things to remember is this location of the site. Location of the site is an area that I think is fairly rich, similar to most areas in Jersey City, as it relates to the mass transit availability in the area. You do have the MLK Light Rail Station about a quarter of a mile away. In addition, right near the site frontage, there's a number of buses that run up and down Ocean Avenue, the Route Six, which goes to Journal Square, Route Eighty-One, which goes to Bayonne, and then also about a quarter mile away is the bus route eighty-seven, which eventually ends up in Hoboken as well. So you do have a lot of transit in the proximate area. In addition, obviously, the via vehicles that Jersey City has has formed an agreement with, so when people go back to commuting for work, there's clearly the ability for residents of this building and residents of the adjoining neighborhood to commute via means other than single occupancy vehicle. And I think we see that in the census data. The census data for this census tract has shown that about fifty-nine point two percent of the residents of this census tract commute by means other than a single occupancy vehicle. So again, about six out of every ten people that live in this neighborhood commute by means other than single occupancy vehicles, which allows you to see that this is an area that although we are seeking use variance, although we are seeking intensity variance, this is an area that has a significant amount of transit so that we are not overloading the roadway network, we're not adding a significant amount of traffic to the road network when we're talking about adding these number of units. In addition, the census data shows that of renters within the census tract, fifty percent of them don't even own a car. So, you know, when we're looking at our parking ratio, and again, we are, I'm short on parking compared to your ordinance, we are required to have one parking space per unit, and we are short of that as we have thirty-eight units and only twenty-one parking spaces for the residents. But I do believe that when you look at the census data and the fact that about only half the residents would be expected to have cars, we could support the parking. One other interesting thing when walking the neighborhood that you notice is that along Ocean Avenue, none of the other residential buildings have driveways, they don't have parking lots for any type of off-site parking or onsite parking. When I walk down, when I walk down the adjoining streets, it's it's a similar, I see a similar thing when I look at, I believe, Union Street, I see a number of kind of row house type developments with that kind of zero setback, that nice Jersey City walk-up style building, and I see again, no driveways, no parking provided for any of the tenants of those buildings. This is a building that although we are short on the required parking, will be, I would say, the most parked site on kind of our corner of Ocean Avenue, at least on our side of Ocean Avenue for the residential buildings, which again, I think speaks to the fact that one, residents in this neighborhood have shown that they don't necessarily need cars, but those that do, I think we are providing a nice additional service by at least providing the number of parking spaces that we are proposing here before the board. I think there's always a balance in providing parking. We don't want to encourage more vehicular usage. You know, the city does have a Vision Zero Plan, does have a Resiliency Plan, a Green Plan, many of these master plans, and a lot of it comes to land use planning. And I think it's trying to find the appropriate amount of parking and the appropriate mix of uses in any one area to allow for a reduction in the opportunity for vehicular accidents, reducing the the need to have increased emissions within your communities. So I think that we are striking the balance here with this development in providing the number of parking spaces that we are proposing. I think what you've heard, and again, when looking at the plans without hearing the testimony that you heard from the applicant himself, you, you know, it, you may get scared off on the fact that we are proposing this kind of recreational use on this ground floor. And I think what you've heard is that this is a use that's meant to be for the neighborhood, it's meant to be used for the community, and it's meant to be used as, you know, more of a practice or a small game mentality, you know, five-on-five type of atmosphere. This is not a building that has stands, it doesn't have bleachers, there's really no area to even sit and watch the games if you were going to go here. So I think it is, you know, not so different than if you were looking at, you know, playing basketball on the Oak Street Park or going to Arlington Park where obviously there may be the occasional person that drives to it, those parks to to use the recreation facilities. But in general, it's meant to serve, you know, the people that are living in this community, living within this kind of quarter-mile circle around the site, this kind of mixed-use development, mixed-use neighborhood. And I think that that's generally what this is looking to serve. We are providing the set of parking spaces, we're actually providing ten bike spaces for the potential users of the recreational facility. And again, I think that speaks to what we're thinking about when we're looking at who's going to be using this field. It could be, you know, high school kids after school coming here for a private workout session, you know, riding their bike to this location and parking in the, you know, in the enclosed bike parking lot, as opposed to being a destination where you're seeing people from out of town driving here just to play foosball or workout, you know, hit some grounders, work on their fielding for baseball. That's, you know, this is meant to be a community, community servicing recreational facility. So I do think it'll generally draw on the residents of the area, whether the building above or the adjoining lots, so I don't see that it having a significant traffic impact in terms of what we're expecting on the site today or in the roadway network today. So I think from a traffic standpoint and looking at the, you know, development in the area, I don't think that this will have a significant negative impact from a traffic standpoint. I also look, and I'm not speaking to this as a, you know, giving planning justification, but across the street from us is the Jackson redevelopment area. And again, I'm not pointing to the fact that there are uses there that maybe, you know, that our use may be permitted in that zone, but I'm just speaking about the type of traffic that could be generated by those uses. You could go up to fifteen stories of mixed-use buildings right across the street from us. And so I think, you know, the same roadway network that was deemed appropriate for that, I think is appropriate for the unable to support our development of thirty-eight units and the two small indoor fields that you heard the applicant speak about. So again, I think from a traffic standpoint, I don't see a negative impact as it relates to this development. As it comes to the the planning proofs associated with this this application, we do have a, we do have a D one variance. This is a a building in a in the R one zone that has increased density. It is a mixed-use building, which is not permitted. It has that recreational use on the first floor, which is is not permitted. But I think we look at the uniqueness of this lot. This is a lot that is about, I believe, seven times the size of what is typically permitted in the zone. When you look at the development patterns around us, the buildings immediately adjacent to us on Ocean Avenue on our side, all are generally, you know, three, three stories and four stories between us and Union Street. So you do see, although this is an R one zone, the type of development and type of density that is is similar to what we are proposing here. We are providing that kind of look, we have a narrow frontage along along Ocean Avenue. So again, from drivers driving by, they'll see, you know, a building that fits in from Ocean Avenue, just like the adjoining lots. In fact, the one difference you would notice from our lot is the fact that we have a driveway, and we have an enclosed parking lot that the neighbors on either side of us do not have. When looking at the use, again, I I think that looking at the size of the lot, I think there's somewhat of a unique characteristic. I do think in terms of the fact that the the city does agree within their in their master plan that there is a, you know, the the recreational master plan shows that there's kind of a lack of recreation facilities, and while I don't compare this as open space, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not green grass, it's not, you know, a fenced-in basketball field, but I think it does provide a a use or a service to the to the community by just having the ability to use this twelve-month-a-year use in this building. And I do think that is fairly important, but I do again, look to the properties on either side of us and see multi-use, multifamily buildings, and I think what we're proposing here kind of matches and fits in. In looking at the height variance, because we do have a height variance as it relates to this development, again, higher buildings are permitted in the zone if they were, you know, senior housing facility, assisted living facilities are permitted to be of greater height than what we are proposing. But we are in a neighborhood or an area where across the street fifteen stories could be constructed. We were looking at, and based on conversations that the applicant has had with the adjoining neighbors, the houses on Union Ave that back up to the site, we were looking to stepping back basically right at our second story to provide a setback so that we do not overimpose onto those backyards along Union Avenue. So I do believe that, again, we are, we are trying to, you know, mitigate our height variance here. In addition, some of the height variance is related to the recreational use. The recreational use requires a higher floor-to-ceiling than a standard just residential building. You know, residential buildings, you could get by with nine-and-a-half, ten-foot floor-to-ceiling. If you try to play foosball or practice soccer in a room that has a ten-foot ceilings, you know, you're constantly going to be slamming the ball at the top of the ceiling. So we do slightly higher floor-to-ceiling in that area that kind of throws off the height measurements for this building. If we were solely a residential structure, I do think we'd be able to get in line with that height variance. But again, I think the benefits of having the recreational use, and you've heard from the applicant, is one we'd like to bring to this area. In terms of the setbacks, the side yard and rear yard setbacks, I think one of the things to to note is that we have a zero-foot side yard and rear yard setback just at the ground floor, just where we have our parking floor. Immediately above that, on the living floor or the recreational floor, we've set the building back at minimum five feet all the way around the structure. So while we don't meet the rear yard setback, it is not zero-foot, you know, basically building goes up right at that line. We do have that setback at five feet, and then where we have the, we back up to those Union Avenue buildings, we do have that greater setback. I believe it's a additional seventeen feet was testified to on the rear of those Union Avenue buildings. So again, looking at the variances that we're seeking as relates to those developments, I do think that there is, you know, significant justification. Looking at the positive criteria as it relates to this application, I look at the Missipulanyus Law and the purposes of zoning. I think one of the purposes of zoning, I think, is extremely relevant here, it's Purpose G. And one of the things it talks about is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, and one of the uses they call it is recreational. And then at the end of those uses, they say, they state both public and private according to their respective environmental requirements in order to provide the needs of all New Jersey citizens. So again, just because this is inside of a building, it doesn't diminish the fact that this is a recreational use or a part of this building is a recreational use and can be used by citizens, whether it is, you know, private organizations or people, coaches that rent this out, but it is a recreational use that is, I think, looked at by the Missipulanyus Law as a positive, positive feature. I do think this promotes a desirable visual environment. I think kind of closing off this gap, if you look at the existing building on this lot, it kind of, you know, just looks out of place when you see this, you know, two-story structure fairly set back from the property line on a road or a street in our neighborhood with this generally these type of row houses look. I think you've seen the architectural plans, the renderings, I think it is an attractive building. I also think from an environmental and an energy resource standpoint, we do meet Purpose N, which is referring to renewable energy resources. You heard the applicant state that he is looking to provide, you know, solar panels and, you know, providing an energy-efficient building on the site. So I do think that is another purpose that is advanced. And then again, clearly not the least of this is also the the affordable housing element for this site. And I do think that by going above and beyond, you know, what the what the city requires and really what they've been even looking to as potential requirements, I think shows that there is a definite good to this development. Again, we are seeking a density variance, we are seeking a variance as it relates to the intensity of the site. I do think the fact that we are providing such quantity of affordable housing at sizes that are equal to the non-afford, I would say, the the market rate units in the building, I think, shows that this application does have significant benefits. When it comes to the negative impacts, again, I look to things when you're looking at a a use variance, especially one that comes with additional density. I think I look at, you know, does it create a significant impact in terms of the traffic on the road, and I don't think it does. I think this is a site that is well-suited for the amount of development here. Again, it was recognized by the redevelopment plan across the street that this is a area or neighborhood that could support this level of traffic. You know, someone who lives across the street has to commute the same way as someone who lives in this building, and they would likely commute via the light rail, the bus, the bike, any of the those means of transportation, the via shuttle vans. So I do think that we do not have a significant negative impact as it relates to traffic. When it comes to noise, I think you heard the care that is going to be taken. I heard a bunch of really long words and some acronyms as it relates to the features in the building that will be used to help suppress the sound. Again, this is all related to the marketability of this building. I think the applicant wants to ensure that they have a a use on the ground floor that does not disrupt the neighbors upstairs. I don't think it's any different than, you know, if you had a restaurant or a bar downstairs, you had a, or you're designing a building, and you want to make sure that above you, you know, the residents above, when they're walking on the wood floors, you know, aren't disturbing the neighbors below. I think that, understand the marketability of this building, that the applicant is going to take care and ensure that the noise associated with the recreational use does not create a negative impact on the rest of the property. Lastly, the one thing that I'll address, and it came up in the planning, the planner's memo, one of the things was related to the density of this site, and I think, you know, the planner definitely, you know, utilizing some information that I don't even have access to, I was able to come up with what the density is of the the entire block, the entire block around the census or the the tax lot, block all the way around this property, basically, you know, from Union to to Forest to Clerk, that, you know, what's the density of that overall block? And and clearly, when you look at the development pattern as you spill away from 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 Ocean, you see, you know, the the type of lots getting much narrower, there are fourteen-foot-wide lots down Union Street, the the buildings become slightly shorter as well. But on Ocean Avenue, where we do have a larger right-of-way on the street, I think the the street itself is thirty-five foot from curb to curb as opposed to Union Street, which I think is about twenty-eight feet curb to curb. You do see much higher buildings, you see buildings that are at higher density. In fact, looking at all the units that are, have an Ocean Avenue address, I'm seeing densities in the range of a hundred and seventeen units per acre, a hundred and eighteen units per acre, fifty-three units per acre, fifty-nine units per acre, fifty-eight units per acre. So I do see, you know, densities greater on the street that we're on, the street where there's bus service, the street that is wider than some of the other smaller, smaller streets that surround us. So I do think that, again, while I I don't discount the analysis performed, I do think looking specifically at at Ocean Avenue, there is a a higher density than what you see in some of the the blocks behind us or on the sides of us. So overall, again, I I think looking at this application and trying to balance the positives and negatives and looking at the unique and suitability of this property, I think that the unusual size, in fact, the usual shape is being taken into account with this development. We are providing a street facade that matches the adjoining properties around us, and I do think that this is an application that can be approved by this board with that unique recreational use on the ground floor, and I think is actually a a benefit to this application. Although it is, I would say, a little unusual, I do think it's important for neighborhoods to have these kinds important for neighborhoods to have these kind of, the, these opportunities of mix of uses so that someone who lives in this neighborhood doesn't have to get in their car and drive to the indoor facility downtown or drive to an indoor facility in Journal Square. They have it right here in this neighborhood to utilize. That's it unless Gene has any comments or questions.
I don't have any comments, but Matt did supply two reports that I like to mark. One is a traffic assessment. If we can mark that A3.
A3.
Thank you.
And the second report was the statement of principal points for the site plan is A4.
A4.
And that completes our presentation, Chairman.
Okay, that's the whole presentation? There's no other experts?
No other experts.
Okay, does, at this time, does anyone from the board have any questions for any of the experts or the applicant? And, and, you know, I do remind everyone, there's, there are some people from the public that may want to speak. So we certainly can, can also hear from the public first and then come back to them. But, you know, I, I open this up to everybody if you guys have any questions at this point.
I'd rather hear from the public and then.
I, I second that. I'd rather hear from the public first.
No one. Kate, do you have any questions at this time? You want to wait?
I, I can wait. My, my questions mostly have to do with the, the planning, the, the last bit of testimony.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine either way. So we can wait. Okay. So if, if anyone here from the public, and I see a couple of people raising hands. So I think Lindsay will, will explain to the public how this will work. But if you want to make a comment or have a question, raise your hand and Lindsay will, will promote you one at a time. And that, you know, I would say it's 7:48. So by 7:50, if you haven't raised your hand, then Lindsay is gonna, you know, not think that you want to be promoted and that you have a question or comment. Also, each person will have three minutes to speak, although, you know, we've seen on numerous occasions that, that you could be a lot more concise. And that I think that for the most part, your comments could be very, very quick. And they could be along the lines of saying, I hate this project, no parking, or I love this project, be a boon to the neighborhood. What's there right now is, is like a derelict, abandoned building. Great that there'll be something there. So something along those lines, but, but, you know, feel free to put in whatever you want. And Chet or Commissioner Rothman is going to be taking time. And he'll let you know when you have two minutes left, one minute left, and then when, when you're out of time.
I prefer, I prefer to just give a notice that with 30 seconds left.
Okay, then, then, then Commissioner Rothman is just going to let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So we have 14 hands raised. So again, if you're on an internet-enabled device, you would go to the bottom of your screen and click raise hand. If you're on the phone, you would dial star nine. All right. So I'm just going to go down the line in no particular order. First, Victoria Stone Cadenha, I'm going to allow you to speak. I'm going to say this each time, but everyone, you're going to state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address. So Victoria, I am unmuting you. And again, please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Stone Cadenha. It's V-I-C-T-O-R-I-A, last name S-T-O-N-E dash Cadenha, C-A-D-E-N-A. I live at 70 Union Street, so across the street from the properties that would be adjacent to this development. I also.
Hold on one second, please.
Is that, you got it? Do you need me to repeat?
No, no, no. Ms. Stone Cadenha, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that your testimony will be considered under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm a long-term resident in this area, homeowner of the property, and I want to register my dissent for this development. I do not believe that the community benefit is, allows for the variances that they are asking for, especially the heights, the lack of egress, the lack of property space for the, the, the properties that are adjacent to it. And in particular, I'm concerned about this commercial property that seems a bit vague in how that's going to be managed and how that's going to be accessible to the community members, what the costs are going to be, how that's going to be managed between the, the residents in that property and the community members that are around. And I also want to say that the traffic concerns are pretty intense, watching schoolchildren taking the buses that there were mentioned in this presentation to school, buses pass those students by going downtown because they are overfilled. So to say that the public transportation can adequately service the students and the youth or the community in this area, we just lost the number four bus, is a misrepresentation. And the anecdotal evidence about parking, I know I'm coming up on my time probably, these are one to two family residences. So clearly, parking was not designed in this community. And this development does not adequately provision parking for those residents that would be living in this space. So I want to give time for other community members to speak, but those are my primary concerns. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Dan Tilio. And I'm going to, I'm going to unmute you. Please state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
He's still muted on my screen.
Yes, Mr. Tilio. Oh.
Yes.
Now he's unmuted.
I'm unmuted now. I'm sorry. Daniel Altilio, D-A-N-I-E-L, last name A-L-T-I-L-I-O. I'm the president of the United Way of Hudson County, and the address is 857 Bergen Avenue, Jersey City.
And Mr. Altilio, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'd like to speak in favor of the project. As you may have heard, the United Way's name is being mentioned as part of this. And Mr. Santamora, we have worked with him with some of the clients. United Way does house many different people in different categories of special needs, homeless, veterans throughout the county. And we have worked with his organization for a long time with, you know, supplying houses. And we, we have a very good relationship. And he approached us about this project and said that, you know, he would be glad to work with us to set aside some, some of the, some of the housing for people with special needs. Affordable housing is very difficult to come by, as you well know, throughout Hudson County, but it's even harder when you're dealing with people for, for people with special needs. And so we really would love to see this project go through. It would really help, it would really help the community at large, that special needs community. And it's not often when a, a developer approaches us about doing something like this. In fact, I've never heard of it. So we, we really are appreciative of this opportunity. We do have another project down the block. We manage the, on Ocean Avenue, the Veterans Housing Project for the City of Jersey City. So I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will vote in favor of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next we have Ahmed, last name D-A-O-U-D. I'm going to unmute you. Okay, so it's saying allowed talk is not available because they're using an older version of Zoom. I'm going to promote him to panelist. Okay, Ahmed, you are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Mr. Dawud, I don't think we can hear you.
Let's move on.
Chairman, should I move on to the next person with their hand raised?
Yes. Oh, I, I, you know what? It looks like we can now see Mr. Dawud. I, I don't know that, I don't think it's working. Mr. Dawud, can you work with staff on resolving that? I think your, your technical issue in the meantime, we'll, we'll move on to another person in the community.
One moment. Apologies, everyone. Okay, so, so next, just in the meantime, we'll move on to Ben, last name H-O-N-I-G. H, allowing you to speak. I'm muting you now. Please state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ben Honig. I'm the property manager of 788, 786 Ocean Avenue.
Okay. And Mr. Honig, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath?
Yes.
Okay. And could you please speak louder? It's very hard to hear you.
Sure. So I'm the property manager of the next door lot, which is in between 790 and 784, which is 788 Ocean Avenue, 786 Ocean Avenue. And we got the letter a couple of days ago that there's a hearing, so we decided to join. And when we purchased a property, there's an easement, which is connected between 790, 780, which is a sort of a joint lot. And we, we intended using the backyard for a driveway down the road. And by doing this project is actually going to hurt us using the easement for a parking behind our property. So this is just my, my only concern proceeding with this project.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Ally Kay. You are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address.
My name is Alexandra Kennison, A-L-E-X-A-N-G-R-A-K-E-N-N-E-S-O-N. And I live at 179 Clerk Street.
Okay. And Ms. Kennison, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and you will consider your testimony as if under oath?
I do.
Thank you.
I want to say that I oppose this project. I will try to make this brief. First of all, I think the property reference that's right across the street, that's very tall, is an old age home. That's probably not the right way to describe it, but I believe that that's what it is. I could be wrong. I think that parking is going to be a strong issue for this. If you look at soccer teams, there are 11 people on a team. That's a potential for 44 cars that will have to park on the street. There is already not enough parking for the residents of the building. So to put an additional 44 cars plus any crossover is not a great idea. It will make those of us who live here who park on the street captive to move our cars because we'll lose our spot, to the point of the houses being row houses that don't have driveways. That is exactly why we need more street parking and not to have it absorbed by somebody coming and using a business. I did go to the meeting with the community about this project. And when it was presented to us, it was presented that the soccer fields were for the community. However, it was never discussed if it would be at any kind of discount for the community. Plus, there was never mentioned that there is a soccer field in the park right down the hill that's free. I don't think that what this community needs and is missing is a soccer field. I think that's a business. And if that business does not do well, then what does that space become? So that's a very big concern for me. Also, the park that's next to it has a parking lot that's used by the church. Are people going to start using that? And the park was built to avoid flooding to the neighbors behind on Clerk Street. Now you're doing more lot coverage. Is that going to cause more flooding? So those are my main concerns, and I wanted to say that I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Keen. I'm muting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please. Again, John Keen.
Oh, hold, I have to unmute. Alt A.
I think you're unmuted.
Yeah, we can.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, we can.
Yep.
Okay. My name is John Keen. I live at 786 Ocean Avenue. I am currently.
Mr. Keen, Mr. Keen, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm currently working as a contractor renovating apartments throughout Jersey City, and I am opposed to this project. I lived in Brooklyn for 20 years, and about two years ago, I moved to Jersey City, basically to escape the rampant development that has ruined New York for almost everybody I knew there. Only now to be facing this badly conceived project that literally wraps around my building on two sides, blocking all light and views. Now, this is totally out of scale and character for this neighborhood. I mean, this five-story building right in people's backyards, but the worst part about it really is just the siding, the placement of this building with almost no proper street frontage for a massive project of this size is just, it just seems absurd. I mean, we had a rear lot tenement housing was made illegal in New York over 100 years ago for good reason. And now we're basically proposing a supersized, modern throwback that covers not just one backyard, but the entire interior of the entire block. This, it's just, I don't know how to say what a terrible idea this is. But on a more personal level, about the best amenity, one of the few amenities I have at living in this building is the view out of my back windows, down the Bergen Ridge, across the neighborhood to the harbor. That will be completely blocked by a wall of this building. In fact, I don't think I'll even be able to see the sky from my rear windows once this thing is built. Just a wall of windows looking into my, you know, bedroom. So on a personal level and also for the neighborhood, just this thing being in the middle of the block, it just doesn't make any sense at all. And if this project is approved, I will probably seriously consider having to move again, which I do not want to do because I am actually liking it here in Jersey City so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Richard Moon. I'm unmuting you. Richard, please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Moon. Richard, R-I-C-H-A-R-D, Moon, M-O-O-N. And I live at 274 Arlington Avenue.
Okay. And Mr. Moon, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I live just a couple of blocks from the proposed project, a five-minute walk. I'm a longtime resident here in this neighborhood. I'll be quite brief. So, yeah, I'm not going to go through every single reason why I oppose this. So yeah, I'm not going to go through every single reason why I oppose this. I am generally open to development and approving of zoning waivers when they make sense. But this project goes well beyond multiple boundaries of what would be reasonable for this site. I would say the biggest issue I have is the rather oversized building that looms over the homes on Union, Clerk, Forest. I'm glad there's been a few people from those surrounding residences that have talked up because, yeah, I would hate to be living there with this building going in the middle. And I'm glad to be following John Keen because he said a number of, you know, statements that absolutely I wish I had thought of. This is badly conceived. To put that kind of building in the middle of a block like that just doesn't feel right at all. So thanks for your, your time.
Thank you. Alberto Gonzalez. I'm unmuting you, Alberto. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Alberto Gonzalez. It's A L B E R T O G O N Z A L E Z. And you guys hearing me? Sorry.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
All right, and I'm the owner of the property that's in 259 Clerk Street.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so a lot of my points have been brought up mostly with the parking. But another big point for me is that since my yard is making the back, is up against the back part of this construction, it's been brought up to a lot of the town hall meetings, the fact that regulations say that the setback should be 20 feet. And from this presentation, it sounds like that wasn't corrected. And that's a big issue for me. It was, it's also, it was framed as if it was some sort of request by us for it to be 20 feet. That's not our request. 20 feet is the regulation. Our, our request was that the regulation is being kept for everyone equally. And it seems not only with this, but some other things that, for some reason, in this case, regulations have been a little bit more flexible. Anyways, so I'm against the project, and, and that's one point that hasn't been brought up. The fact that the setback from the footprint of the building should be 20 feet, not the above levels, but from the bottom. And that's it. Done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next up, Maria Teresa Garcia. I am unmuting you. Maria, please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Maria Teresa Garcia. I reside at 242 Clerk Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07304. I affirm that that is my identity.
Ms. Garcia, would you, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes, I affirm and verify that I am who I stated, and I will continue with my testimony under oath.
Thank you.
Thanks. Initially, I just want to note, I'm going to try to keep my comments short, but I'm not sure what the basis is for the three-minute limitation, but I'll try to keep it within the confines of that. I'm opposed, I live on the other side of 259 Clerk Street. I live on Clerk Street on the other side. And I oppose the proposal because I do not think that the opposed project is going to overcome the negative aspects that the substantial deviations to the zoning regulations that are proposed, specifically with regard to parking. So Mr. Sekler testified during his portion, and I guess this is directed to him. You testified that the, you utilize the census tracking data with regard, in support of the position that not a lot of residents utilize their vehicles, which is not going to be an uptick of a single-use vehicle. My question is, the census tracking data that you reviewed, is that from 2010? Mr. Sekler?
I could get you that information. I believe it's the American Community Survey, which takes a five-year, it's a five-year sample, and I will get you the years that that was taken.
So would it be fair to say that it was at least five years ago?
It would be taken over a five-year period. I believe the most recent one ended in 2018, so it was likely 2013 to 2018 is my estimate, and I'll get you an exact date for the years.
Okay, so you don't know which exact date the data is from?
I will get it to you, and I'll be able to state it before. I don't want to take up any more time, so why don't you keep asking questions, and I'll pop in when I get the answer.
Sure. Is the data specific to our, to the neighborhood?
Yes, it's specifically this census tract, Census Tract 45 in Hudson County, which is this neighborhood.
What is the information based on?
It's based on the US Census sends out, they send out periodic surveys to individuals within, you know, within every community. And when they get a sample size large enough, they publish the data in terms of things like, how many cars do you have in your house? How many, how do you commute to work? How long is your commute? Where do you commute to? All those characteristics. It's different than the standard population census, which is what I hope everyone on this call has filled out for the city, where they basically ask how many people live in your house and what their ages. This is a different aspect of the census that the census collects, a different survey that they collect.
I understand, but then the questions that you're saying then with regard are all based on the census report or census from 2010, is that right? I mean, I understand that you're saying that the data that you're using is based on a report that's over five years. Is that based on?
Ms. Garcia, your three minutes is up.
Okay, so.
Your three minutes is up, Mrs. Garcia.
I understand. Okay, let me go on. Let me.
Your three minutes is up, please. May I say something?
And I can, yes, I can answer the question that she was asking earlier. It was, it was from 2013 to 2017 was when the data was collected for this survey.
Thanks, Matt. Matt, did you have a question?
May I ask a question? So the, the young lady was speaking and asking questions. I think that should not take away from her time of speaking her mind because there was a question, a Q and A. So can we at least give her another minute to speak?
I disagree with that because she decided to go down the road of asking those questions, and she knew she had three minutes, and she used it in that way. We can't, everybody could have a story about why I needed more time to pursue a line of questioning, but that was her choice. And we want to hear from as many people as we want to hear and keep it as brief as we have been doing very well tonight.
Yeah, I mean, Matt, I think you raise a good point. I mean, Chet has a valid argument as well. I mean, if the majority of the board wants to give Ms. Garcia an opportunity, but I mean, I think to answer her point, for example, I mean, we knew exactly the point that Ms. Garcia was making within 10 seconds of going down that line of questioning. So I'm not sure that it was, it was necessarily super valuable. But at the same time, you know, everyone has the opportunity to, you know, say what they want to say and have that on the record, so their viewpoint is understood. But I mean, to put that in five seconds, it was saying, we don't know if the data that the expert has provided is an accurate representation of how many people actually use cars in that neighborhood. And we think more people need cars than is proposed here. So I mean, if, if, if the majority of people, let me know. I mean, Matt, if you think other people, I'd be happy to do that, but I think that otherwise, it's already, and to Ms. Garcia's point, I mean, as to why we limit the time, we've been moving quickly, and it's already 8:15. So that's why.
Should I unmute the next participant?
I, I got it.
Okay, next is Coach Alex Lalouie. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, but I think you're the only person that has Coach in there. So you are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, super. This is Alex. I'm sorry, I just go by Coach Alex to the point, like sometimes I put my name accidentally with Coach. So Alex Lalouie, it's A L E X, last name is L A L A O U I. I am a US Soccer Federation instructor and also New Jersey Youth Soccer Coaching Instructor, as well as the ODP Olympic Development Program for the States.
Coach, hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you state where your address is, please?
My current address right now is 324 Hops Lane, Secaucus, New Jersey.
Okay, and Mr. Lalouie, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that your testimony tonight will be considered as if under oath?
Yes, I am, and I will.
Thank you.
I'm the founder, of course, I'm the founder of Soccer Learning Center and the US Soccer Heroes. One is for civilians and one for law enforcement and first responders. Both of them are based in Jersey City for the last 20 years. At 189th Street Downtown Jersey City, we share the place, us and Hudson County Explorer School, myself and Coach Bob Hurley Basketball. So that's our base facility. The moment when I heard about this project from my coaching experience, I can share this with you. It is not from developer standpoint, but what I'm sharing with you is my relationship first between me and Mr. Santamora as his son. I was impressed not just to coach his son, but to observe his personal growth as an athlete. He has the courage, the skill, and determination to help collaborate and lead. I am sure this kind of behavior and discipline is reflection of his parents. And I'm speaking about Mr. Santamora and Mrs. Santamora. I don't think he's kind of that developer only like others. I think he has a sports vision as well, which is very important. And I understand you're trying to make a decision here, okay? And this decision based on sports, teamwork, collaboration, something that the community needs. Okay, and this is how to bind the community, and especially during this time, get the civilians and the first responder through sports. I heard earlier someone said about the traffic, oh my God, 11 people coming in. Earlier also, I heard the footsall. There is a lack of understanding. Footsall is like, let me translate it this way to make it short. Footsall, it's like indoor soccer. They only play five v five, it's five against five, and it's rotation. That's what I've been doing for the last 18 years as well in downtown Jersey City. But if you have a project in that area, which they needed more than anyone else, I am, as an instructor from the US Soccer Federation, the governing body for the United States, I could tell you, any support from our end, you've got 150%. I think it's, I can't even describe it. I think this is an amazing opportunity. And, and I can enthusiastically, I mean, I can enthusiastically support Mr. Santamora's needed projects, of course, in the great city of Jersey City.
Coach, you have 30 seconds left.
I encourage you, please, not just to approve this project, but I think to be part of it, show your motivation, inspiration, and as a leader and a decision-maker. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is William. Apologies if I'm mispronouncing your last name, but Wychekinas. So William W., I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record.
Thank you. Good job, too. William Wychekinas, W I L L I A M. Last name W Y C H A K I N A S, 201 Clerk Street.
And Mr. Wychekinas, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that your testimony will be considered as under oath?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board and everyone on the call for the opportunity to speak tonight. Let me start by saying that I oppose this project. I first moved to the area, this area of Jersey City 10 years ago, purchased my home here two years ago. One thing that's been consistent for as long as I have lived here is that my neighbors like that we're not stacked on top of each other, like the residents of downtown, but our neighborhood's quiet, that we have yards, and there's a sense of community. This proposal negatively impacts the things that our neighbors love about this neighborhood, doing that by increasing population density, building right up to the property lines, including two private indoor foot skip ball fields in a residential area, not including adequate parking for the apartments or the fields, and setting precedent for what can be built on residential properties in the future. I'd also like to point out, too, that not a single resident who has spoke so far has supported this project, and I hope the board takes these comments and concerns into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Keisha. No last name provided. Keisha, I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Keisha, you're still muted.
Keisha, are you able to unmute yourself?
I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted.
You're now muted.
Yes. My name is Keisha, K I E S H A, last name is Pate, P A T E, and I live at 222 Arlington Avenue, and I oppose this project.
Excuse me, Ms. Keisha, do you verify that you are who you say you are and that your testimony will be considered as if under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I oppose this project for the reasons that have already been stated, as well as it just infringes on the quality of life of the people that directly live around it, as well as the surrounding blocks. As far as the traffic goes, there's already enough traffic on Ocean Avenue. Ocean Avenue may seem on paper to be a wide street, but it is not. So when you talk about having driveways that you have to go in and out of, that's just going to obstruct traffic even more because there is no other lane to go around. As far as buses go, the buses are already overcrowded. When you add that many more people, it's just excessive once the life gets back to some type of normalcy. As far as the indoor field, it would be offered to the residents first, and so what's the likelihood that anyone outside of that building would ever get to use it with that many people already living in the building? And again, they haven't stated any, you know, criteria of how you would be able to rent the field or any of that. And that just, it's just not a good fit for where it is, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before we go further, Lindsay, do you know who, who, who is left in the queue? Are you able to freeze that from the public? Are there five people left?
There are 12 people with their hands raised right now.
I thought you cut it off after, in the beginning, I thought there was only 15. We've already gone through 10.
Yep, and, 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 and for the record, everybody who lives in the neighborhood opposes this project very strongly. They're, the, the only two favorable sets of comments were from, you know, the, the coach and the United Way, but they're not residents of the neighborhood.
The reason I asked this of Lindsay is because I think Bridgette needs a break at this time. We've, we've been at this for two hours. She probably needs a break, and I was wondering how we set who's going to be speaking next. I don't want to take a break, and then 40 other people say they want to comment.
Well, one of those is the gentleman Ahmed that we couldn't hear before.
Yes.
And somewhat, and Victoria also has her hand raised, and she already spoke, so it's more like 10 members of the public, which is similar. I think we only really heard like seven or eight people so far, so it is pretty similar to the original.
So far, we've heard 10.
Okay.
So there's an additional 10?
There's an additional 10 plus the one gentleman who we had technical problems, but do we, do we pause in the middle of public comment or do?
Sure. Yeah, if Bridgette needs a break, let's take a break. But, but I would, I mean, I agree with, with, with Kate that, you know, everyone who's, who's been listening in knows what we've heard. So I would take that into consideration. So I would take that into consideration. We know the viewpoint, I think, clearly of the neighborhood.
Right, and can I just maybe just read the names before we go on break so we can refer to it later to make sure no one? Okay, so we have Nichelle, Anu, last name starts with an L, Chris Perez, Educational Gilmore, Joyce Maxwell, Jodi Ann, Jeanette Pinkney, Kareem Sadi, someone entitled HB, someone named Joyce Ahmed, and someone named Nancy Williams, who just raised their hand now, so...
I mean, are we able to cut off people being able to raise their hands at any moment? I mean, that was the purpose of saying at 6:48, it's, you know, raise your hands within the next two minutes if you have something, if you have a comment you want to raise. I mean, I'm all, people can speak, but, I mean, really, people's comments can be, "I second exactly what my neighbor just said." And in which case, like, I don't know that we need to hear from anyone other than to get a sense that there's a lot of people who have, you know, certain viewpoints. So it's, I don't want to waste any more time. It's 8:27. Bridgette, what do you need, five minutes? Okay, so we'll try to stick to getting back on the record around 8:32, 8:33.
Are we going to cap the people that are there now for the more repeat speakers after the 13 that's registered?
I would even say there's probably some people that just raised their hand now that I don't know why they needed to wait an hour before they could raise their hand. But I don't know, Lindsay, if you had an ability to be keeping track of that.
It's hard when there's a lot of people. That's why I wanted to read into the record. That way, we can ask Bridgette to go back and, you know, double check.
Okay, so anyone that you didn't read into the record right now, we're going to not hear from?
Someone else just raised their hand. We were talking. Do we count that, or this is?
I mean, I don't think so, because people have been, had the opportunity. They've been listening in for two hours.
All right, well, I guess let's just...
I think we should just take the break. There's a lot more. It seems like there's a lot more people adding on right now.
Okay, well, I'll see everybody at 8:32. Bye.
Okay. We're off the record, you know.
We're off the record.
Give me two microphones.
Bridgette, are you back? Do you need more time?
Sorry, no, I'm here. Sorry.
No, no, no. I think other people are not necessarily back, but I wanted to make sure we're accommodating you.
Thank you, though. I've had a few instances where they just go, I'm not there. Actually, not during a break, but I found out in my home, if you use the microwave, knocks me right off. I don't know why. And I had to come back on real quickly, and they didn't even notice I was gone. Okay, so thank you.
Well, we would notice if you were gone.
I would appreciate you noticing. And they said, can you read back where we left off, what I said? And I'm like, no, because I wasn't here, so...
I'm back.
It looks like we have everyone except for Commissioner Rothman.
And Vinnie.
Who is Vinnie? There you go. See his chair.
There he is.
There you go. All right.
Chester's still getting his breakfast?
All right, so I think we're back on the record, right?
We don't have Matt.
We don't have Matt?
They have his screen.
All right, I guess we'll wait 30 seconds. I see, I see Matt. Okay, so I think we're ready to go to the next person?
Next is Nichelle. I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please. Sometimes it takes a moment.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Nichelle Mumford, N.I.C.H.E.L.L.E., last name Mumford, M.U.M.F.O.R.D. I live at 79 Union Street, and I'm the owner of this property.
Okay, and Ms. Mumford, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I oppose the project, of course, as you know, for a lot of the reasons that everyone stated, but the major reason is because the people that live in this building that's going behind my house can literally jump out the window into my backyard. So therefore, my quality of life has been swiped away, and the reason I moved here four years ago is no longer, because I won't feel comfortable being in my backyard with a four or five-story building looking down at me. So, I mean, it's a good idea for a project, just not in that space, unfortunately. And I guess that's it, because everyone else has kind of rattled off numbers and stuff, and I agree with all of it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Anu Leinonen. Sorry if I had mispronounced it, but Anu. You are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Anu Leinonen, A.N.U.L.E.I.N.O.N.E.N. I'm living in 249 Clerk Street.
Okay, Ms. Leinonen, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Since a lot was already said against this project, I'm also against it. I'm an architect, so I was really carefully trying to look into this brief presentation at the plot ratio and the setbacks, and the size of the project is clearly outrageous. It's a scale of a Manhattan block in our green Bergen-Lafayette area, which clearly doesn't fit here. The setbacks, as Michelle was just stating, are right at the border of the plots. So each neighboring plot is affected by it, also by the construction, since you can't actually construct the building right at the block. It will impact at least three feet, five feet inside of the neighboring block. The size of it is also then limiting the daylight condition on existing buildings, which was touched upon in the engineering report, but was not explained whether there is any mediation to provide better daylighting. And the landscaping, green areas, outdoor areas, especially important now in the COVID times, are non-existent. So I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chris Perez. Chris, you're unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Hey, Christopher Perez, C.H.R.A.S.T.O.P.H.E.R., P.E.R.E.Z. I reside at 69 Union Street.
Okay, and Mr. Perez, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm at 69 Union Street. I also have another property, my parking and my extended yard at 87 Union Street, that abuts this project. I just wanted to clarify. I have met with Mr. Santamoro a couple of times on this project, not 10, but three. The goal of those meetings was to try to help him scope this project to something that might be close to what the community would be up for. During those meetings, he oscillated between having components and removing components. There was a point where he was going to remove the commercial. I told the community that. They were a little relieved, and then he reintroduced it, which was very frustrating. Overall, we had spoken with many of the residents on Union and Clerk, and they were not happy with this being at the property lines. They were not happy with the height. They were not happy with the density, and they were not happy with the parking. At the last meeting I had with Mr. Santamoro, I did give him a list of the community concerns, and the goal was to eventually have a public community meeting. And these meetings that we had before were to prepare for that. What seemed to happen is he kind of accelerated the process a bit. Maybe there was a miscommunication. I don't really know. But all of a sudden, it was going before zoning. We hadn't had a community meeting, and then we're rushing to have a community meeting in December, and 13 attendees were at that meeting, and none of them were in support of this project. What we were hoping to have happen is a series of community meetings to have back and forth in collaboration. At the end, it just didn't really turn out that way. On top of that, I would like to mention a few things. There is an easement, I think, that gives access to parking behind many of these buildings. I think about 20 units of buildings could benefit from the parking that's accessible from there. The 782, 784 Ocean Building, that whole rear yard used to have two six-car garages since 1919, and you can find that on the 1919 plat record and the 1938 tax record. For some reason, that parking was taken away from the residents and then puts more burden on our street parking. So I'm a little worried about this project taking away that easement and access to parking for 788, 786, 784, and 782. On top of that, there was a couple of little things. Let me see if I can find this here. Trying to speak is, the proposal abuts 13 properties with a total of 22 units that have enjoyed the quality of life of the R1 zone for over 100 years. Project calls for a structure to build to the property lines towering against their yards. The intended consequence of the R1 zone is to preserve the integrity...
Slow down, please.
The consequence of the R1 zone is to preserve the integrity of residential neighborhoods. The zone includes maximum unit building height, lock coverage, and minimum building setback restrictions to fulfill that mission. The proposed project calls for zero-foot side yard setback, where at least five is required. Project asks for zero-foot rear yard setback, where actually 52 and a half feet are required because it's in excess of 100 feet. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
Next, Educational Gilmore. You are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, my name is Frank Educational Gilmore, F.R.A.N.K.G.I.L.M.O.R.E. I'm a property owner at 100 Egi.
100 Egi Street, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Mr. Gilmore, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm definitely not in favor of this project for a number of reasons, as all of the neighbors have put on the record. In the interest of time, because I'm pretty much going to be saying what everyone else said, the reason why we're not obliging to this project, the parking, the commercial space, everything. I've just opposed this project altogether.
Thank you very much.
Joyce Maxwell. Joyce, please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Good evening, Joyce, J.O.Y.C.E. Maxwell, M.A.X.W.E.L.L., property owner, 272 Clerk Street.
And Ms. Maxwell, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
As everyone else previously stated, I oppose the proposed property on 790 Ocean. I am going to speak to something that has not been brought up, so I'll make a brief statement. Obviously, I am against the no, the excessive deviation of R1 zoning. The no, excuse me, the no ground, on the ground floor, there's no setback area and vacating the current easement. But in addition, I am a mother and educator, and so I take issue with the impact that a potential transient population of renters will have on children and youth in the community. Because there is only a proposal for Studio One and Two Bedroom Apartments, I question the viability of growth in families, and I question how these apartments are scaled for children and youth. A two-bedroom apartment does not sound as if it will fit an average family of four. I've lived in this community for 16 years. My now 21-year-old son knew his neighbors by name, and they knew him. As a family-oriented community bursting with youth, I feel that the proposed apartments do not account for children, which are the hallmark of any family-centered community. I feel that the proposed apartments do not account for children, which are the hallmark of any family-centered community. Additionally, the youth in our current neighborhood, as well as adults of this community, will be susceptible to the transient population, which infringes upon aspects of physical safety, sociability and socialization, and neighborly involvement and interactions. Finally, I'm concerned with the zero-foot rear yard setback, as I said, height of the buildings, which will close off those private homes directly affected by the height of the buildings. That limits access to sun, a clear view, and this is also an integral part of the physical, mental, and emotional growth and well-being of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Jeanette Pinkney. Jeanette, you are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Ms. Pinkney, I think you're still muted. Uh, you unmute yourself. Ms. Pinkney, we, we can't hear you. I didn't know if you were talking. All right, Lindsay, let's, let's move on to someone else, maybe Ms. Pinkney, um, and, uh, the other, Mr. Daoud can figure it out later.
Okay, next we have Kareem. Kareem, you are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name, please.
Hi. Hello, my name is Karim Sadi Mazaru. Uh, 350 Warren Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. Uh, spelled K-A-R-I-M, last name S-A-I-D-I, space, M-A-Z-A-R-O-U.
Okay, and you said 350 Warren Street?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Sadi Mazaru, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, everybody. I know it's getting late, uh, so I'm gonna try and keep it very short. Um, I'm in favor of this project. I am the president of, uh, the Global Soccer Academy here in Jersey City. I've lived in Jersey City for twelve years, and, um, even though I do not live, uh, on Ocean Avenue, many of my players do. And many of the players are always looking for extra space to play, um, to train and to work out. Um, this is sometimes in soccer, but they also do other, uh, sports. They do, uh, track, they play football, they play baseball. All these sports kind of come to a stop once the winter hits. Uh, we already are suffering from a lot of, um, sports space in Jersey City, um, and this would definitely be an amazing, uh, addition to that. Um, I would also like to speak about the traffic, because in, uh, GSA, we have over a hundred players in our organization, and we play at Gateway Field, which is on the corner of Marcellus and Grand Street. Um, many players just get dropped off, uh, if they arrive by, uh, car, but also many just ride their bike there, and many live in your neighborhood. Um, I also would like to point out the Armory. The Armory in Jersey City during the winter is packed, uh, with children who just ride their bike there and go, or walk there, and actually go there to, uh, have a good time in the moment they cannot be outside. Um, also during the summer, it's, kids will still go to the Armory, uh, and participate in, uh, uh, recreational events, because it is, there is such a shortage of all of that. Um, as far as what, uh, Ms. Joyce just said, I do agree with her that there is definitely an increase in, uh, um, transancy. Um, I've seen it myself. Many of the kids that come to the academy, play, and then leave for the suburbs. And I think this is exactly why this is so important to have a location like this in Jersey City, to keep people here, even though there are rentals. I do believe that people, once they see there are activities there for their children, there will be a long-term effect, uh, in the positive sense, and this is what I've been fighting for over the last twelve years that I've lived here, and-
Thirty seconds left, please.
And this is why I am in for, in, uh, favor of this, uh, project, and I think the neighborhoods should be as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joyce, this is a different Joyce than spoke earlier, that spoke earlier. Uh, Joyce, please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Joyce, you're moot, muted.
Joyce, can you hear us? You should be able to unmute yourself. I unmuted you.
Shall we move on?
Yeah, let's, let's move on.
All right, next, we're gonna, I guess we'll try, uh, connect with Ahmed. I have to promote him to panelist, because he has an older version of Zoom. And since he's a panelist, he can mute, unmute, start his video, turn it off, so see if this works. Mike, can you hear us?
Mr. Daoud?
Well, if you can hear us and we can't hear you, you could try calling into the meeting. Just pull up the agenda and dial in. But that's the only suggestion I have.
Okay.
Okay, just gonna move on. Next, we have Nancy Williams. Nancy, you are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Williams, N-A-N-C-Y-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
And Ms. Williams, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
And could you provide your address?
My address is 62 Union Street.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, good evening, everyone. I, I'm sorry, I had po, imposed of this, uh, due to the fact, what everyone else had said, um, mostly about the parking. And they talking about doing all this construction. We don't have that much space as it is on Union Street, just as well as Ocean Avenue. So I, I really, really don't see, um, this is for, for us. Maybe some of you, yes, but for those, I can only speak for myself. And for some of them on Union Street, it's, it's not gonna work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Todd Colleen. Todd, you are unmuted. Please state and spell your name and provide your address, please.
Thank you. It's Todd, T-O-D-D. Last name is Colleen, K-O-L-E-A-N. I live at 673 Bergen, Jersey City, New Jersey.
And Mr. Colleen, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, I will make this very quick. Um, I am a, also a coach, and it seems like a lot of athletic coaches are kind of, you know, putting forward what they feel is good for the athletes and, you know, the teenage, you know, athletes that are trying to better themselves. And I understand neighborhoods trying to protect what is theirs. Um, I just want, it seems like this is a good opportunity, both commercially-wise for the neighborhood and for the young people and the youth that need something that is a year-long commitment to their sport. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And next we have Felicia. Felicia, please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Um, Felicia Collis, F-E-L-I-C-I-A, last name C-O-L-L-I-S, 189 Clerk Street.
Okay, and Ms. Collis, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, and good evening, all. Um, I too am not in agreement, um, with this project, and I just wanna, uh, make reference to, uh, what Mr. Sekler was mentioning about, um, the height elevation. There's no problem having, um, heights along main, um, streets, but not behind, um, residences that, again, would overshadow, um, uh, other residences on the, the, um, side streets. So again, like what everyone else has, um, conveyed, I'm not in agreement with the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, we have HB. Uh, your username is HB. You are unmuted. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
My name's Henry Bunce, 59 Union Street, H-E-N-R-Y-B-U-N-C-E.
Okay, and you said 59 what street?
Union.
Oh, okay, thank you. And Mr. Bunce, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony tonight as under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just, uh, agree with the, I'm, I'm opposed to the plan, like the rest of my neighbors that I know of, and, uh, I think it's strikingly unusual plan. It's like an experimental plan in my backyard. Um, I think zoning is in place for the harmony and well-being of the neighborhood. And, uh, I think they could come up with a more comprehensive and suitable project, and we, you know, we're not, we'd be happy with that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have Ahmed who raised his hand again, but we also have somebody, their Zoom name is Owner. Uh, Gene, is that the owner of the building, or they didn't have their-
I doubt the owner of the building. I mean-
Which, what, what should I do?
That's not, that's not me.
Okay, so I guess we'll give Ahmed another try. All right, Ahmed, you're promoted to panelist again. You have all the capabilities to, I'm asking you to start your video. Um, you could try calling in. But if this doesn't work out, not sure what to do. Ahmed, can you hear us? We could see you.
Doesn't seem to be working.
No.
Mr. Daoud, did, did you try calling in? I mean, the, the, I don't know how long we're gonna, we're gonna try here. It's, it's not working.
Yeah, so that's why we provide all of the instructions on our agenda and clearly on our website, and we give people the opportunity to test run Zoom ahead of time. Anyway, they left, wait, never mind, they're still there. So I'm not sure what to do.
Well-
There's not much you can do.
Yeah.
Move on.
Yeah, we're not able to hear from, from Mr. Daoud, un- unfortunately. Um, I didn't, was there anyone else?
Nope.
Okay.
That closes-
What?
Can I make a motion to close the public speaking?
Second.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, yeah, the public is closed. So does anyone have, um, you know, I, I don't know how, do, do people from the board want to, um, ask questions now of, of the, um, the applicant? Um, do we want to give the applicant opportunity to, uh, respond to some of the things that were raised, um, by the, um, by the public? I'm, I'm happy to take either approach. So if you guys have questions now, um, feel free to ask the questions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, can I make a statement only after hearing so many of the local residents being opposed?
Hmm.
Um, we now, at least, I spoke to my client, and although his dream and his, 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 um, what he really wanted to he, help the children here with this, uh, indoor facility, he feels that it, after hearing everybody, we're reading the tea leaves, it's not appropriate on this site. So what he would like to do is to remove the indoor facilities from the project and remove four of the units, reducing the project to thirty-four units with twenty-eight parking spaces. And the height of the project would only be thirty-six feet, which is only one foot higher than the zone allows. And he feels that that building would then be much more appropriate for the, the site. And we just, uh, first of all, I want to thank all of the residents for, uh, coming in on the meeting and, and voicing their opposition. Um, it's a democratic society, and I think the majority rules.
Um, Mr. O'Connell, I, I mean, thank you very much for, for, um, you know, providing, you know, that, what you've discussed with your, um, um, your client. Um, I mean, that's a different application. Um, that, that's not before us. Um, I, I, we can't, um, on the fly, I mean, we don't have, we don't have those plans in front of us. So I don't, I don't even know how we would, um, be able to-
And, and, and frankly, I mean, that, while that sounds better, I mean, one huge issue that was not dealt with at all was setbacks and then basically putting this monolith in people's yards and view sheds. You know, the, the, the planner went on and on about traffic, but didn't hit any of the other important points about density, set, setbacks, so many different things. So I, first of all, procedurally, we couldn't vote on something that's not before us, but in addition to that, I think you have a lot more homework to do than that. That's my view. That's my view.
No, I think you're right, Kate. There's no way we could just, you know, modify this on the fly like that. So, uh, we left then with the age-old, we withdraw this application and go back to-
I, I appreciate everybody's time. I don't think it's right to continue to, to take your time up tonight. Uh, no, I- neighbors, and we're going to, uh, resubmit.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
Yes.
Uh, one of, one of the speakers tonight talked about, and I think it was Mr. Keen, about how this plan resurrected in his mind the, the idea of the old tenements that were kind of stuck in, in the backyard that have been basically outlawed, which I was reaching the, the, the whole time when I was kind of reading through the, these plans to, what was it that was really making me crazy about it? And, and that gentleman summed it up. Um, but I, this is a lot to put in people's backyards in an R1 neighborhood. So I, I think you have to think really carefully, and people really care passionately about preserving this neighborhood. So-
Yeah.
My two cents.
No, Kate, I, I think that's very important, and, and the, the other major point that you raised, I think, i- is critical, at least what I was thinking, that, um, you know, you're, you're attaching a bunch of, uh, you know, c- connected, um, lots in the neighborhood with- You know, connected lots in the neighborhood with virtually a hundred percent lot coverage. You know, in a predominantly low density neighborhood. So I, I mean, I think that that needs to, you need to take into account kind of what's what the footprint of the neighborhood currently is. And while there may be wants beyond residential space, and I really do applaud the, you know, out the thought to try to have some creative use. I don't think creative use that's non-residential can can make up for the fact of, you know, what the what the imprint would be in terms of. The physical structure and the density. That those were the things that that struck me that I would encourage the applicant to take into account.
The other piece that I found striking was that. The applicant is the one who created this bizarre piece of property or is attempting to through strange subdivision. But then you're trying to use the strange piece of property as a positive, in the positive criteria analysis. It was just completely on its head to me. Again, my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, yeah, you know, just like Kate said about, I feel like it was like. The issue about density was all scattered around from, you know, never got a clear answer on that issue. You know, I feel bad. I mean, it was a good idea with the recreation in that area because. You know what? Right now, a lot of the children do not have anywhere to go and they said that, you know, it was only gonna be like ten people in there at a time, you know? I thought maybe it could have built that separately from where the other building or whatever. But I was concerned about the issue where the density numbers that we were given were never really rectified by the statements that I think was. I'm sorry, the person, the gentleman that said that, Seklef Mike, I think. He just scattered around the whole issue. There were nice ideas in there. I love the ideas about having somewhere for the children to go. I disagree with the people that were complaining about it would be bringing around parking. And like the, we had three coaches or whatever, you know, say that. You know, it's good for the children and all, you know, unfortunately, there's nowhere for children to go. But, you know, this was somewhat of a plus for the place. But like I said, a lot of the other things just didn't match up and listening to the neighbors and all, it was just that, you know, total. I think it was only like three people that actually out of the thirty or whatever that said they were in favor of it. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I like to put on a record also, so kudos to you guys for trying to. Put some for the children to do. Now, I'm, I have five papers of questions, but I'm not gonna ask them because of the withdrawal, but. If it was something that you were doing to give back to the community, our community is needed. If it does need it, the children in New Jersey or just in this coast or just Jersey City is. We unfortunately don't practice one sport all year round. That holds a lot of kids back once they get older to try to become professional along with other stuff we could speak on. But if it wasn't for free and it was for a fee, a membership or whatever. Jersey City could use a Rexplex affordable to inner city kids. So if you got the money like that, let's bring a Rexplex to Jersey City, but keep it affordable because the one that was in Elizabeth or wherever. Was a little too expensive for for Jersey City kids to travel, so. Thank you for, thank you for the try.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I didn't know what that was.
No, my my other screen like turned on.
So, Gene, thank you. The the application, both of them will be withdrawn.
Correct.
Let's go on to memorialize resolutions and then we have to go into an executive session.
Okay, well, again, thanks so much for your time and have an enjoyable night.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you to the public that came out. You know, the last thing we want to do is waste your time. You all came out and spent two and a half hours listening to something and this isn't the first time this has happened. So we're gonna go back to the drawing board as a as a board and maybe as a city to kind of. Figure out how to, how best to make sure that that we're being responsible. You know. People in in political offices for the city so that that we're not wasting your time. We'll figure that out. So the next time, hopefully, we will hear an application and vote on an application.
Well, to the public's credit, though, we heard them and the applicant heard them and the applicant's not going forward anymore.
That's that's certainly, that's certainly true. We really do appreciate all the comments that the public provided.
Okay, good night.
All right, good night.
So. Thank you, Gene.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a few resolutions. We have two cases that were heard on May twenty first. The first is Z nineteen dash zero eight five. The address was one oh seven Jefferson Avenue. And that was the applicant, I'm sorry, it was Monroe Ventures LLC. Present on the twenty first were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners McCormick, Netchett, Rothman, Velardo, Jamie and Mitchell. That was an application for a C variance. The address was, as I said, one oh seven Jefferson Avenue and that was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next application also on May twenty first, same seven commissioners present. This one also passed, seven in favor, none opposed. And this is case Z nineteen dash one zero four. The applicant was Hudson Home Builders LLC. Seventy eight dash eighty Manhattan Avenue. That was an amendment to a major site plan. Again, that was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next two cases were heard on June eleventh. They were both approved, seven in favor, none opposed. Present on June eleventh was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, Velardo and Brown. The first case was S S K J C two LLC. That was case Z twenty dash zero zero six, the address, six eleven Communipaw Avenue. It was an application for a preliminary and major site plan approval with C and D variances. Again, that was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
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 Heard on June eleventh. Again, passed, seven in favor, none opposed, seven same commissioners present. Case Z twenty dash zero two four, the applicant was Bernadette Pino. That was a D variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use at seventy nine Giles Avenue. All in favor of approving that? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last case, the last thing to memorialize was heard on June eighteenth. That was case Z eighteen dash one two nine. That were present on June eighteenth were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners McCormick, Rothman, Shadid, Netchett, Velardo and Brown. The applicant was Alan Kenkrow. That was a preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variances. For three seventy seven dash three seventy eight Fourth Street in Jersey City. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So that ends the memorialization. So I, if we can move into executive session, we have one thing to discuss.
Okay, just give me, give me like one minute to remove the public and stop recording.
Yes.
Give me one moment. Give me a moment. If you're watching, if you could just leave the meeting, that makes it a little easier for me.